Thank you everyone for attending. We'll call the February sixth, twenty twenty four, City Council Meeting to order. Five thirty two P M. If you'll please stand. Mr. Reed lead us in the prayer and pledge.
Let's pray. Our Father.
Lord of heaven.
Hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come. Thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread. And give us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The highest kingdom, the power and glory forever and ever. Now, Father, we just want to thank you. Thank you for this, uh, new year that you've brought us into, and thank you, Father, for our place. Father, even in the lives of this city and its citizenry. We, as the board, continue to ask for our correct principles to guide our life and, Father, to instruct us that we might be leaders and that we might stand out as the leadership of this city. Father imparting and implementing, God, the principles that will lead our city and to lead our citizens in the right direction. So, Father, give us that wisdom that we need and the comprehension that we need. Father, to lead this great city. We ask this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Congratulations, Senator Plaid, of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Um. Any agenda amendments by the administration?
No, sir.
By the council? All right. We'll move on to, uh, guests, Mr. Ray Weston, Hancock Chamber of Commerce. How you doing, sir?
Good evening. My name's Ray Weston. I'm the current president of the Hancock County Community Development Foundation. Uh, with me this evening also is Tish Williams, Executive Director of the Chamber and the Foundation. Uh, thank you for giving us the opportunity to meet with you. Uh, we're, we're here today to present the proposed rental agreement for the first floor of the old historic City Hall building, uh, at three hundred South, South Street. I think you should have a copy of this agreement, uh, in your package. As you know, when the Chamber entered into the agreement with the city to rent the second floor or the Chamber office, uh, you asked the Chamber to manage the first floor of the building at the Business Resource Center. Uh, it really is a, is a service that citizens of Bay St. Louis. And the agreement states that the Chamber, uh, has the full authority to establish rules and regulations for the center, and these must be approved by the city. Um, it also states that the Chamber may, uh, charge a reasonable maintenance fee, uh, for dentorial expenses and really any other incidental expenses that the center may incur. With the backup just a little bit, when we first got the space, uh, as you know, it was an empty room. And, uh, we took some time and studied the market and talked to people, analyzed some things and, uh, just really to try to figure out the best way to utilize the space, the way to configure it. You know, maybe the furni- the furnishings that we needed and so forth. And so, we were really, uh, grateful, uh, last year to receive a ten thousand dollar roundup grant from Coast Electric. Janelle is here, uh, Janelle is here today to, uh, we really appreciate that with your company with Coast Electric and, um, which really was the catalyst to help us, uh, furnish the space and really to get it going. And so, it's, it's really turned out to be really nice, quality meeting space. It's great for workshops, for training, for networking events and so forth. So, um, we're really proud of it. I think most of you have been in the space and, uh, it's really nice. It's cozy. It's well thought out. To me, it's great for ten to fifteen people, but it's also functional for forty, fifty, even sixty people. Uh, we've had that, uh, the, the furniture and fixtures that were, the furniture and equipment that was purchased is really, uh, designed to be movable and to configure to the type meeting, uh, that you're having. So, uh, it's all very functional. I think one of the best things is Tish, really in her team is upstairs and able to manage the space, able to wa- keep a close eye on it, watch it, and really vet anybody coming and going and, and, and vetting who's using the space. So, uh, now that we're fully operational, uh, we're here today to ask for your approval of the rental agreement. Uh, we have established already an account, uh, we, we call it a fund at the foundation. Uh, all income expenses will go through that account. Um, if ever you needed a P and L, you want to see a P and L, a balance sheet, anything like that, we could produce that on a regular basis or however often you, you'd like that. Um, you know, realistically, this is not a, a big moneymaker. It's intended to be a service and a resource for the community. Uh, we hope that maybe whatever we, if we do, uh, clear on it, maybe we can even put it back into the center, invest back in it. So, the agreement you have was, um, was, was thought out, was well thought out by the Chamber Board and the Foundation Board. There's about thirty-five of us that had input into the, uh, to that agreement and, uh, and, and that's what we are recommending this evening. So, uh, I'll stop there and be happy to answer any questions. Comment as well.
Any questions from the council?
I just had a couple of comments.
Okay, go ahead.
First of all, Mr. Weston, Ms. Williams, and the rest of the crew, thank y'all for coming tonight. Thanks for the opportunity to take a look at the building. Um, beautiful building. I mean, it's, it really is incredible. I think one of the gems of the city. And so, I don't disagree. I think it's a great concept, actually, uh, in, in trying to make this the most productive area. There's just a couple of mechanisms in the agreement that I would like to kind of discuss with council and see some alternative options. You know, I think in being consistent with what our other parameters or within the parameters of what our other rentals of our buildings are, I do want to try to put in a mechanism that, you know, I think it's a hundred dollars an hour or three hundred dollars a day, flat rate, but it only applied to profits. I would like to see something that's consistent with our other rental properties as well, where there is a consistency, where there's for-profits and profits have a set fee. And then put in maybe some parameters that, let's just say, for instance, you have a, a nonprofit that wants to use that on a monthly basis for their meeting spot, then there can be some, some discounted rates. But I do think, you know, trying to do a win-win for the city and the taxpayers as well as the Chamber, I think it would be a great opportunity to have that. Um, and additionally, I, I would like to see that money go into a ledger account with the city. And as you mentioned, Mr. Weston, that it's probably not a huge moneymaker, but it can help, um, offset some of the cost of the building for the insurance. I think we're upwards of about twenty-two thousand dollars of insurance for that building. Um, and then also, you know, as expected, I think with the great reputation of the Chamber, we're going to have a lot of people that want to use that as a meeting center. So, I think it's going to be well utilized. And so, putting that money back into the building, but having the ability for the city to have that in account to where we can work together and allocate those funds appropriately, how we can best use that to put back in the building. Um, so that's, that's, those are my two main recommendations. Um, yeah, so I'd love to hear from any other council members on that as well.
Yeah, I've discussed that with Chamber. Um, in two thousand sixteen, we, uh, City Base St. Louis has a lot of properties we tried to manage. Over the years, we figured out that we were not very good landlords. Um, we could not manage properties very well. Two thousand six, um, for probably a whole year, we tried to work on property maintenance agreement with different realtors and places, and we just never could come to an agreement. Um, this whole City Hall set vacant for years. Um, it's better of use, you know, building needs to be used. Uh, I agree with Mr. Lewis. Um, I think I talked to the team last night about, you know, the monies will be put into a separate fund. Um, and any funds, um, in excess that they don't use for the building for daily maintenance, uh, air conditioning goes out, it helps fix it if the roof needs to be repaired and there's money in there. It can be fixed. We can ask for an annual, annual accounting of the funds. So, any, it's funds will be there if it generates funds. So, does anybody know how much money the big community center in Bay St. Louis made last year? Sixty-nine thousand dollars. Sixty-nine total. We have a budget, a hundred and two thousand for the City Hall, for the community center and the, uh, Old Town Community Center. Total revenue was a hundred and two thousand dollars we got budgeted this year. So, it's not going to be a big moneymaker. It could be. We'd love it to be so it could help, you know, if the air conditioning goes out, fix it, right? Help for pay for insurance if you get a surplus of money. But yeah, um, I think they agreed last night that we'd get an annual accounting for the money and any funds in excess that were, you, you know, they making of, um, that can be used for, for, for the building maintenance, um, something, uh, you know, got like the, um, community center, the Rotary Club, right? We have money that's in excess that can be used. So, I think this could, fund can be set up the same way. The city, to meet the city, we have enough properties we manage. I think it'd be set up in the fund. We could say, hey, we need five thousand dollars for an air conditioner. You have ten thousand dollars in the account that, you know, we need a cushion. But, uh, I think personally going forward today, um, I think the nonprofit, yeah, Mr. Lewis, I, I don't know where I'm at on that. There's a spot for nonprofit at no charge, governmental, no charge. Um, but, you know, it's, how do you balance that out at some point, right? But, uh, again, after talking to the, the group, yes, that I feel comfortable with getting annual accounting, understand where the budget is, uh, on an annual basis. And if we do need something, if there's funds in the account that we can use those funds to, to help maintain the building, air conditioning, heater, whatever goes out, we can still, the city can, um, use those funds to maintain it.
If, if I can ask, Mr. Weston, what, what is the rationale for having the foundation, having those funds go into the foundation? I guess what is, what is the basic premise there? Okay.
I mean, it's, it's fine for you to set up a ledger within the city. You would then manage it.
Mm-hmm.
And I think you had asked us to manage it. So, instead of it going into the Chamber of Commerce, we believe that the best thing to do was to set, set up a fund under the Hancock County Community Development Foundation, which is a five oh one C three nonprofit. We manage, we are a fiscal manager for twenty different funds. And everything is kept separate. Every fund has its own separate account. But if you wanted to set it up under the city, then you would have to manage it.
Yeah, and I don't know if it delineates in the management, whether it's fiscal management or actual physical management of the building. Um, and, and I would like to say, I don't know if there's provisions in the agreement that would, you know, again, I'm not saying I, I believe everybody's word, but it's always, I want to make sure that, um, there is an accounting of it, that if, if there is a need to repair, that it's spelled out, that there is, that that's what those funds are for. I just didn't see anything in the agreement that really.
Right now, we can't even afford to hire a janitor. I am the janitor, okay? So, let's get real here, okay? There are going to be expenses that are associated with that building, with that downstairs. First, a janitor. Okay? That's number one. And so, right now, there is no rent.
And that, and that you just.
We've just been handling that ourselves.
Yeah, and that's why I just, and, and I think there, there is that need, um, regardless, I mean, if there's a lot, yeah, obviously, I, because I do think, I think it's going to be very successful. I do think that it's a very desired spot to have meetings. That's why I, I, I think it's a great plan. Um, but I think we're going to see that wear and tear and that need for the janitor regardless. I, I want to make sure that, that cost, and it's not a very, I mean, a hundred dollars an hour, three hundred, really three hundred a day, I think is, is appropriate cost.
Right.
But, but at the same time, if it's only being charged a profit, it's the, you know, it's still going to be utilized by nonprofits, but then I think we're going to kind of be eating that cost to where we're still going to have that wear and tear. So, that's why I was, yeah, not looking to make money, but at least break even to where we're making up that wear and tear. And it, and it's consistent with what our other rentals are in the city as well. Like I said, I'm, I'm open to, you know, a rate structure similar to what we have, um, in other buildings that would be a decreased rate for the nonprofits, but I do think it is fair to have some consistency between the profits and non-profits in terms of having a charge, so.
Well, we have thirty-five business leaders who have totally vetted this whole proposal. And it was the general, it was fact, it was unanimous consensus of both of those boards that the for-profits should pay a rental fee, but that the nonprofits and government should not. And there's, I'll give you an example. The other day, the Tourism Commission wanted to have a quick meeting. They were there for maybe an hour or two to have a meeting. What am I going to do? Here's your rental agreement. Now, give me fifty dollars. It, it's not, it's not feasible.
But if, but how would we handle for a for-profit, same situation?
No, for-profit is going to plan in advance and they're going to come in and they're going to schedule, you know, their event. And they're going to pay the fee. But if you want to charge the nonprofits, that would be your decision. It's not our decision.
Yeah, I think it's a discussion amongst the council.
Because they do so much for the community already.
No, and I, and I, I'm not discrediting that. I think we've just seen a lot on this council, um, requests, and it's, when you do it for one, you have to do it for all, and it's hard to, you know, to differentiate, should we do it for this nonprofit and not this one?
So, that's why we're saying, let's don't charge nonprofits, let's don't charge government, but let's charge the for-profits. That's our recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you for that. Any other questions from the council?
I'd just like to reiterate, those are all good points the council's making. Um, I like to see maybe a reduced rate, uh, for nonprofits and kind of like we do with the community center. And, um, and not charge government agencies. Why tax the government agencies another fee?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
So, I'd, I'd be okay with, you know, reduce rate to some nonprofits, but all, well, actually, keep it, keep it consistent across the board.
Discounted rate with the, uh,
Ms. Moon.
Do nonprofits have discounted rates with the, uh, community center?
They're, they're non-P, non-P days.
Ms. Moon, go ahead. I'm sorry.
I'm Nikki Moon at two thirty-three Cary Court, um, and on the board of the Chamber and at Old Town Merchants. Um, and yes, I did do the, the research comparing the agreements that you have for both facilities for the city and the pricing structure. Um, and so, we tried to model our agreement after what you have. And as you know, you don't charge for government entities either. Um, Old Town Merchant meet, meets, um, in the facility every month. We leave it the way it was when we arrived. There's not a coffee cup left. There's not a Coke bottle left. The chairs are put back in place. And I believe that every other group that has met in there, nonprofit, is the same way. It's, many of you know, when we had Southern Rail meeting there last fall, we cleaned it up afterwards. Tish and several of us, K Cal, we were in there cleaning the room up so it looked just as good as when Rail arrived. Um, I think it will be very difficult. I can only speak on behalf of Old Town Merchants, but if you were to charge us a hundred dollars a month to meet there, or twelve hundred dollars a year, we wouldn't be able to do it. We'd probably have to go to somebody's home. I mean, we're a small nonprofit organization. And I think many others would feel the same way. Um, I would have hated to see us charge Southern Rail Commission to use a building for their meeting that is going to bring business to us. And it's kind of the way I look at Old Town Merchants. We are there promoting this city and trying to bring guests in and spend money to bring more tax revenue in. So, I don't understand really where the benefit would be to charge us a hundred dollars a month or fifty dollars a month or whatever it might be, when the whole purpose is to bring money into this economy and into this city. So, uh, am I biased? Yeah, I am biased on it. Uh, but I do think that the groups, the nonprofits that are meeting there justify because of the fact that they walk into a clean building and they leave a clean building. I think they justify the fact that they should be there, uh, at no cost. We have, um, we've put a good pricing structure together, I believe, for the for-profits based on our size to make it comparable to the other facilities. Um, we've got a contract that has been vetted by legal to make sure that it covers everything. Uh, we will have a credit card to make sure that we're not left holding the bag on any expenses, especially in a janitorial phase. So, I would, I would encourage you to support this. We did our best to follow through with your guidance and your instruction on how to use this facility to the best way to support this community. And thanks to Coast Electric and its members, we now have a facility, as many of you saw, that is very, uh, multipurpose. You can have a small luncheon. You can have a small meeting, um, for our, uh, educational meeting that we had last week. There was not a seat left. People are so hungry for education, and this was sponsored by the Chamber. So, I, I hope you'll consider our request.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Okay. It's on the consent agenda, but possibly we can bring it up to Mayor's report if you want. That way we can vote on it after guess.
We can bring it up now.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I may have very, that's good discussions, right? And I know when we first built the big community center, there's three, there's four meeting rooms in those, in that community center that we thought we could rent out on an hourly, weekly, monthly basis. And we, you know, do junk rooms now. We just never, we never done managed them well. I mean, we just, again, brought back that property management system that we were terrible at. Um, I think it's a good proposal. I think any building being used helps the building. Um, when it's set dormant, it was just rotting away. I think moving in it is movement, um, helps. I think the nonprofits do provide some, um, back to the City of Bay St. Louis. We have bigger buildings that bigger groups can rent out, meet Old Town Community Center, Community, Big Community Center as well. I think this is a small enough space for ten or fifteen people to meet, um, to make community, the City of Bay St. Louis better, quite honestly. Um, we have no problem moving forward. Again, I'd like an annual accounting of the funds, um, to show us where we're at, right? And if we get a million dollars in there, we might start looking at doing something, right? Um, and we understand and whether we have to have an agreement written down, or we understand, um, that any, you know, excess funds will be used to help maintain the building. Um, as today, it's on record as agreement. Um, so I'll move to make a motion, recommend a, uh, lease or the rental agreement with Chambers presented today.
Motion by Mr. Seal to approve the lease as presented, correct? Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman? Any further discussion?
Uh, yes, do we need, do we want to change that, uh, uh, where, where we're going to put the monies now, or we want to wait till we get a million dollars in there?
Well, it's going into the Chamber account, um, a separate account under Hancock County Development Foundation, um, where the funds will be administered out from there.
Well, they can't be co-mingled.
Yes, can't be co-mingled, so it'll be a separate fund. It was for annual accounting.
I'd put that in the motion. Is that?
It give you a monthly account.
Yeah, I don't.
For the fees associated with managing the account, it's with the Hancock.
Uh, let me answer that.
Good question.
So, yes, the Hancock County Community Development Foundation does have transaction fees for our funds, but in this case, the board is waiving those fees, which would be anywhere from five hundred to a thousand dollars.
All right, thank you. Good question. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Thank you, Ms. Tish. I think you had discussion, Mr. Lewis.
No, I just, again, I wanted to preface. I think the concept, I think it's a very good concept. I think the layout of it, tremendous job. Thank you, Coast Electric, for that, that, uh, furniture. Again, I just stick to, you know, and it, and then, and I think it could be up for discussion on what we felt comfortable for the nonprofits and not denigrating, again, not the, the great work they do, but I think at least to the point where it would break even some expenses and costs of wear and tear on something that'd be a lesser amount, but not just, you know, zero, so.
I, I think right now, you know, we're just, this whole thing's at the ground level and just, you know, we need to see how it's used and, and whether it's a problem or not. I mean, we revisit it every year, so we come back to it and, and next year we find out that, you know, two hundred nonprofits came through there and tore it up and destroyed it and we're out money and the city, Chamber's out money and, and everybody, it didn't work, it didn't work.
So, do we get a, do we get a report of the usage and the rental?
I just don't see it.
I mean.
I don't see the wear and tear on that building killing the,
Okay.
you know, because we let nonprofits use it and a few people go in there and meet. And I think being consistent to all nonprofits and, and to government entities is, we just need to be consistent one way or the other, whether we're charging or not charging.
I think a little.
The problem we've run into with the other buildings is when we come and they have a special request, so, you know, we're hosting our, our new gala, um, can we get the community center for free? Well, we have to say no because we don't give it to anyone else for free. So, I just think in this instance, we're talking very small scale, you know, use, very small scale, uh, pe- amount of people in there using it at any given time. And I just, I, I don't see it as something that's going to destroy the downstairs of, of this building and we're not going to have funds, whether the funds are coming in from that account to, to cover whatever the, the maintenance may be on it. I'm hoping, that would be nice if, if we get funds that are coming in from that account that can supplement some of our costs on it with maintenance and insurance. But, you know, we do have the rental on, on the top floor and we did ask the Chamber to set this up and, and create this. I, I think everyone's had a chance to see it and, and visit there and see what's going on, and I really think it's a good incubator for, for our city and our, our, our city nonprofits and our, and our city community as a gen- as a, as a whole. And I think it's a good place for people to go and meet. It's safe and it's contained and it's not, you know, a tremendous building like our community center where we have, as Doug said, the meeting rooms and all, but in order to use a meeting room, you've got to have access to the whole building and you've got a heat and cool, you know, quadrant of the building. I mean, it's just, it's a much different animal than, than this small space downstairs in my vision.
I agree with that, Mr. Hoffman. It's set up really nice. It looks great. Um, and we do have a lot of volunteers in the city that promote the city and help the city grow. The, the city can't do it all on our own, unfortunately. We need help from volunteers and some of them are the nonprofits in the community that, that could use a little place like this. I think it's a great amenity that we've been lacking for a long time. We, we discussed this when we sold the Garden Club Center, possibly doing something like this there at the time, and we didn't do anything. So, when it comes to the rental on the other buildings, the city's actually sending an employee out with the key, going to check it. So, we've got expenses we incur that we will not incur here daily in the rental process because we won't be managing any of that. So, we won't have those expenses to the city or taxpayers or the daily employee going out and checking and being involved in the process. So, I, I'm fine with it as it's presented. Any further discussion?
Uh, the only thing I have is that, um, you know, I like a yearly review, um, you know, uh, accounting, stuff like that.
Yes, sir.
You know, kind of put in the clause that when, you know, I really like the fact that you're going to be policing the area because, let's face it, if they had another person to clean it, you know, they take care of it, you know.
Yep.
Okay, uh, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six one. Thank y'all. Um, Mr. Reeves is not present.
I was going to begin to talk about that. Voted on it?
Yes, sir. Um, I think you asked one question. And please step forward, Mr. Rod.
Well, y'all been both?
I would still like to hear what you have to say. You know? That's why I asked you to move it to under Mayor's report and the motion was made.
Is it official?
Anything can be amended at any time.
Well, I like the way the conversation went. We by far, you know, we, uh, in the giveaway business, I know that. Well, you know, we, we pay a lot of money to the Chamber. As a matter of fact, their dues, that's my blood sugar low. My, uh, their, their dues come up tonight on the docket, don't they?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we pay dues. We pay, uh, for four elected officials in the county, four thousand dollars. We pay sixty thou- I think it's twenty thousand a year from the Board of Supervisors, because that Hancock County Chamber, and it's the Hancock County Development. It's not Bay St. Louis. I think we're taking a lot of ownership of something that's countywide, and we're not looking at it from a bigger perspective. Bay St. Louis is just picking up the tab for everything. And, but, by the way, we're county taxpayers, so whatever they give them, we pay too.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, just, I mean, it well-funded. I, I, I mean, I, I don't want to hurt anybody's feelings, but it sounds to me like they have a lack of participation of their membership because they, they need money. And we don't need to be assessed. Their membership needs to be assessed. They real clear about their membership. For instance, uh, the state of the county address. You wanted to go, it was thirty-five for the Chamber members. It was forty-five for non-Chamber members, even though we pay the bills. I mean, they make a real clear deal there. It's a county thing. It's not a Bay St. Louis thing. I think it needs to go to further discussion about maybe other entities jumping in and helping with us. We, we pay their light bill, don't we? Do we pay the utilities? We pay all the utilities. We pay the garbage. We pay the water, the gas if they have it. We pay the maintenance. We pay, uh,
We do that.
Fifteen, twenty thousand dollars a year in insurance?
We do the same.
And we're going to take on the whole county's responsibility?
Do the same thing for the senior citizen building.
Yeah, and, uh, that's where I'm getting at. We, we're taking on too much. Uh, we, 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 y'all got to represent us. You don't represent the nonprofits. You don't rep- you represent the citizen. They got citizens in those nonprofits, but you represent them as a citizen, not a nonprofit.
Yes, sir.
And I just, you know, personally a little angry that y'all walked right past me. You, you got the agenda right in front of you. There's only three or four of us on it. But, uh, I, I just think that, I don't know why, everything comes to us. We're the easiest pocket to pick, it looks like. You know? There's a lot of good things goes on with all these operations. I belong to a lot of them that we don't ask y'all for anything. But every club I belong to, and it's a club, because it's a membership. whenever there's a financial problem, they go to the membership. They don't come to the taxpayer.
Yes, sir.
And y'all can go on with your vote, we can discuss it, but I, I just don't see Bay St. Louis taxpayers being represented. We're not here to represent nonprofits. We're not here to represent any of that. Here to work with them a little bit. And, but nonprofits is subject to each person's individual, uh, preference, which ones they like and support. And I don't think it's incumbent upon y'all to give our money to any special nonprofit. I give money to the ones I like all the time. To be the church, whatever, but I just don't, uh, understand this giveaway thing that we do.
I give a lot too, and a lot of organizations I belong to also, they are for the organization. I feel the Chamber does promote the city. It does promote tourism. It does help the city, you know?
Well.
You might disagree with me, a lot of events the city has, the Chamber partners with, helps us advertise, promote, set things up.
I get it, and they get paid for it.
They do a lot. I don't think eight seventy-five a year, we're paying for all they do. Now, what the county gives, I'm not big for the county, I'm big for the city.
County taxpayers, and so it needs to be a single source funding, not everybody willy-nilly throwing money.
I don't have a vote at the county.
No, but y'all, y'all, to work when we do it with nine-one-one, we do it with a lot of things.
Yes, sir.
It's called, uh.
I think we have value from the Chamber. That's just my opinion. You may disagree.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna question their value. I have no idea what they do. I know they take a lot of pictures and stuff and, but I just heard them up here, they can't even afford to get somebody to mop the floor. That means their membership's not contributing.
That means the building hasn't produced anything yet also, at this time.
Well, there you go. So, we'll, uh, just keep paying the bills and they'll get the money, alright?
We, we'll re-discuss it and we'll look at it and we'll keep an eye on the financial reports and we'll keep track of everything and we'll report back.
Cause they had a, a, a beautiful PowerPoint less than a year ago about what was gonna happen. That never occurred. And I know that they're behind on their rent most of the time. That means they don't have money and you work with them, that's fine. There should be a late payment clause in it. They had a good attorney writing it for them, but, uh, I've never seen a heavily slanted, I've never seen a lease agreement heavily slanted to the favor of the tenant in my life. And I've seen a lot of them.
I think that same lease was copied to a few other nonprofits that might be in the train depot and some other buildings. It was pretty much copied.
Well, uh, I, I talked to Jimmy Latner about them.
Favoritism to one organization's.
One of them's governmental and the other one's educational.
Yes, sir.
They're two different things. They're different, they're different than this.
And the Chamber actually has more guidelines that we could give to them than any other nonprofit within the city probably, because state statute.
You're just fine giving our money to them and that's, you're up to you.
We, we have a conversation, you was throwing stuff out there and I'm throwing stuff back to you. That, I think is fact too. So, yes, sir. And I respect your opinion, Rod, so, you know, we disagree, but I respect your opinion, so.
Why? Well, it's, it's easy money.
Anybody else have anything to say, Chris? Okay, anything else, Mr. Ward?
No, hell no. Get the checkbook out.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate you. Mr. Lonnie Faukoo, uh, representing for Old Town Merchants, Alice Mosley. Michael Reeves, he wasn't here, was he? I thought I might've missed him, I'm sorry.
He's great.
Good evening, gentlemen. Um, my name's Lonnie Faukoo with Alice Mosley Foundation. I actually should've been here back in November, but unfortunately some other things took precedence, but I'm not here to ask for anything. I'm here to give you.
Yes, sir.
So, first thing I'd like to address, this is an FYI, because I should've done this back in November, and there's a lot of good things going on, so let me start with just a list and run through it, so y'all can go on with business. The depot, as y'all know, it's just blown, gone to business. That depot, building's being renovated. It, it's a lot of good things going on. I'm happy to say that, uh, we have at Alice Mosley Museum and Foundation, we, as of today, we're entering our eighteenth year of being in, in operation as a nonprofit. We've welcomed seven hundred and three thousand people to that building in eighteen years. I think all of y'all need to be proud of that. That puts in, and on a side note, I wanna make an announcement that I've been given permission to do. Uh, and I'm glad it waited, uh, till now, is, but we are in the process of obtaining Alice Mosley's Booker Street House back to our foundation. Our plans are, is that we have been working, or I have and three, four other people have been working with the Mississippi Historic and Restoration Group, and they have been overwhelmed that we could get this house back. And our plans are, is to turn this back into Alice's museum. And in turn, within a year of renovation and the thing we're doing, we have received approximately two hundred forty-eight thousand dollar grant to help restore this house. We've met with neighbors and we have had no opposition. I assure you, not one opposition about bringing this museum back to fruition. It's a good thing for this matter, because we'll be bringing it back to Booker Street where Alice, who called Bay St. Louis her hometown, we're bringing her back home in her museum. Now, of course, the first thing, the next question is, well, what are we gonna do with the museum up, up there, because it belongs to the city well? A gentleman by the name of Dennis Smith, who Alice mentored for forty-eight years, who is a philanthropist, happens to have some historic blues, jazz, and other memorabilia stashed away. We would like to open up, once we're completed Alice's house to move back, we would like to open a blues and jazz museum up there. We'll come to the city, but it's ready. But, uh, hopefully within the next thirty-eight months, we'll be going from one museum in the depot district to three. And if we add the, the Mardi Gras museum, then we'll have four. So, the hustle and bustle and the sightseeing will be down there, so we think it's a wonderful day. On another thing, we have been successful many, many times at Alice Mosley, and I'll just give you a few instances. We did Alice Mosley Fest, we did Alice Mosley Day. We've done a lot of other thing, and I think one of the things that personally I'm proud of is that we brought the Vietnam Wall to Bay St. Louis two years ago. And, uh, Coast Electric has been absolutely a phenomenal partner to be working with. And we just obtained a ten thousand dollar grant from Coast Electric. We have put in that we would like to take that depot district and bring it back to fruition. We have talked to the Tourism Board, we have met with John Anderson and Matt Stipe, we have talked to Mary Brooks. And we would like to form a partnership where we can take this money and connect the depot district with the Old Town District. And to show the people that we're one in the same, that we're growing in leaps and bounds. And if you're overcrowded Old Town, you can come to the depot, and if the depot's looking for things to do, you wanna go eat, we're gonna get you back. This grant, I sent each one of you a letter and I just gave Heather a letter and I apologize, I didn't send it to it. But this is just the scope of what we wanna do, its ideas. And one of them is, is doing some decorative sign. One of the things we'd like to do is, is take the duck pond house out, and we're gonna redo the duck pond house, because we get a lot of complaints, 'cause the ducks don't have a house. So, uh, we wanna do some signage. We wanna do some signage on each end of the depot. And one of the things you're gonna see there, and it's something we've heard from the businesses, and I briefly talked to the mayor a couple of months ago, we would like to see if we can get some crosswalks done. I know they're expensive, but we would like to take, and one thing I did in this grant, this is called connecting the depot district. This is the theme of this project. And we, we can put some crosswalks at blazing Booker Street, put some crosswalk by Union, and then take and do one in front of the Chamber, where they have one about old, the Holy Trinity, and get that repaired. And then Mary Brooks and I talked about the one that's on Second Street Main. What we'd like to do is get the white cases put in to do the crosswalk. And then in the grant, they have gave us money to take artists from around the city and bring them in, and let's do some themes within the crosswalk, from doing Redfish, doing Pelican. If you wanna go to the Chamber, we'll have a sign saying Chamber with an arrow going this way. If you have the duck pond and you wanna know where Old Town is, we'll walk it out. If y'all all recall, I stood, I stood up here thirteen years ago and we did some duck feet that's in the depot. Some of them are still there from the duck pond, the depot, and if you wanna buy duck food, you can go in the kids. It's a big hit. And, uh, so we're gonna redo duck feet. And, uh, we're gonna take the ones that are there. This is all in the grant. I'm not asking for any monies. It's all in the grant. Where we'll take this and go back, gonna do duck. Then we came up with a plan, we'll maybe put in a few duck feet, uh, down some streets, where we'll do one color sign, if you want this, you wanna go to Old Town, let's go orange. And if you wanna come back to the depot, then you can go yellow. So, that's just some of the themes of what we wanna put in there. Uh, the key is this, is not to get into it. You can read the letter and it'll tell you what we're gonna do, but of course, the case and point is that anything we do, we need to submit it to, to the mayor and Mike Rizzo, and then he and they in turn have to come back to y'all and y'all have to approve it, because we're putting it on city property. So, again, this should've been done a few months ago. We're playing catch-up right now, and it's, so we're gonna be hitting y'all. We have artists, we have a committee, we, we've got people drawing things up. Uh, we're gonna have some stuff done, and, and once we'll get it, we'll put a package for them. And that will have some of the artists that come in here and make presentations on what we're gonna do, how we're gonna do it, and of course, the call's gonna be up to you. So, I think that's a wonderful.
Yes, sir.
So, uh, on behalf of the foundation in, in Old Town, and, and I've met Mary Thier and, uh, John Anderson, all of them, I wanna thank them. Ms. Myrna too, as y'all know, Ms. Myrna's sick once again, she's working at home. But all of them in partners with that, if you see the letter, this is not us. We got the grant, uh, Coast Electric's been wonderful, we're gonna take this grant and pass it on to the city. The other thing I'd like to get a catch-up back in, two years ago, Councilman Reed formed a committee to get some ideas for the duck pond and the depot district and everything, and then we have stages, we have bandstand, we got a lot of things going on. One of the things that we had put in there was that, uh, we wanted to put a small kids, a ten-year-old in under by the duck pond. And, uh, hopefully, and this came through with a confirmation today, that there is a private foundation that is gonna donate sixteen thousand dollars to the city. Uh, between now and June, the city's gonna have to accept it, and then the city can use this money to go pick up, pick out a, a playground to be put next to the duck. So, that's another thing we, we're getting done. Uh, another thing we would like to talk about, and, and again, this is all giving, we have just been awarded a five thousand dollar grant. And if y'all know, uh, this is gonna be the fifth year of MOPOL in Bay St. Louis. And I think everybody has realized how much of a home run this MOPOL thing has been. We have got together, we've been talking for this for a year. When I say we, let me name these people. Alice Mosley Foundation, Tourism, uh, Bobby Richardson with the Waverlin thing, 'cause they're back with Cruisin' the Coast now, and, uh, also, uh, met with Scotty Adams, and then also Nancy with Diamond Head, and then also Cassie with, uh, Hollywood Casino. And this is the lineup for two thousand and twenty-four. Waverlin will start off that Wednesday, which is the ninth, having their Waverlin Day with the Cruisin', and then Wednesday night, we will, they will go to Diamond Head, and Diamond Head will do their typical blast, like. Thursday morning on October tenth, we'll wake up to, right now, that's pre-registered, three hundred and fifty-two bull bars have already been registered for that depot district. And then here's the, here's where the new thing comes in. The mayor and I've talked about this probably a hundred times. Uh, Scotty Adams has talked to it, talked to us. I have approached Visit Mississippi about an idea to have a county concert in the depot district on Thursday night, October tenth. They have awarded us five thousand dollars to put a show on that night. They have, we have since partnered with my dear friend, but has been a good friend. We now have a sponsoring champion Dodge Chrysler Plymouth, which he's been with us, so I'm gonna submit a special event permit to the mayor tomorrow to have Hancock County Concert Under the Oaks on October tenth, the night of Cruisin' the Coast after MOPOL is over with. We'll go into another concert, and all calls will be invited. It will be open, it will not be a Dodge Day, it will be a concert and all cruisers will be invited. Uh, we had the backing, like I said, of Diamond Head and Waverlin, everybody, here's the kicker. We, uh, we had a meeting and we talked with Cassie Williams of Hollywood, and they have since enjoined us, and they're gonna do their parking lot party on Friday, and they're also gonna do it on Saturday. So, five years ago, gentlemen, we had nothing going on in Bay St. Louis at nighttime, uh, before. So, now we got a schedule of five days in a row where, once Cruisin's done during the day, you got a reason to stay here, and we'll keep, we'll keep going. So, it turned into a wonderful. And we also have secured some hotels arrangement with Ramada now, the Comfort Inn. Hollywood, of course, has opened the doors throughout the last five years. So, it's economic win-win. The other thing I'd like to talk about and bring us up to date on is, just bear with me, trying to catch up. One question I have, this has nothing to do with the previous conversation. We once again have received a twelve thousand five hundred dollar grant, and we would like to do a summer program. If you gentlemen recall, we came to y'all five years ago and we had a summer program that was very successful. We have three wonderful ladies running this, this museum now, that I am so grateful to have. And we would like to do our summer program again and do different programs, but all and every kid, that will do it. My question I have, and I have not asked the question, is the kitchen gonna be renovated, Mike, at all? We have, and we get this, because they have gave us fun. If y'all recall, we rented that from y'all. Uh, I think, I don't know when they did, we rented it from y'all, we had our summer program. So, this grant that we're getting for twelve-five, they, they had allowed us rental for us to have. So, if the kitchen's not done, then I, I guess I'll talk to the Chamber and we'll see about it. Using it over there or renting from them or whatever, but we do need a place, uh, to have this summer, it's gonna be for nine weeks. It's gonna be different art projects, painting projects, pottery and stuff like that. I was just wondering if we could tighten up the kitchen, get it cleaned or get it air-tight or something. Work out a nine-week, a nine-week dream, and we could rent it.
Just the project that's currently going on does not have that in, that area in the scope of work. I mean, something the Chamber wants, Council wants to look at, that's something they could look at.
What is, so what is this, so with the kitchen, I remember a couple of years back when there was an event there with COVID, and there was this issue with, with AC, and we got that, got, that was fixed, right? So, there's, the equipment's still in there. Is that, all that equipment still?
Most of it's moved out. The electric boxes and all that, that's a big concern and all, that type deal.
There is some, some interest in renting it out from others as well, um, you know, different things, people's calling about it and everything, um, but right now, it's, it's not ready to be anything done with it yet. Yes, I think there's still a pretty good bit of electrical problem back there, the panel over there. You know, um, I think last time we had to do some things around that, I think for insurance reasons with, with the children and all, um, you know, so. We can, we can look at it and see.
And let's chat about it.
Yeah, it was successful. Last time we did, I mean, we, you know, we paid rent, it was good, it worked out, because we could do it in the building. We only just found out about it recently, and I like that class, but it's something, but I mean, we don't need it renovated, we just need to kind of tighten up, like, the panels were one of the issues, because the mayor's right, they did stop, took up the left. But other than that, we just, and it, it was a good deal for everything. We have to find a place to rent the whole these classes. We can't do it in the museum. I'll get together with.
Yeah, let's just get the other brainstorm on it.
Yeah, okay, you know, yeah.
The other thing that I'd like to bring across, and I think I bumped into Mr. Seal and I told him this one day, that, uh, I don't know if everybody out here is aware, but the depot business, building was never ever completed and it's never been fully put on the historic national register. So, uh, in looking for another grant, uh, that we're looking at to help out, it was notated to us that, uh, it's, it was never put in the national register. So, basically, what I have done, and, and it has nothing to do with municipality, is that the process needs to be finished. And Congressman Zell is gonna take the rest of the paperwork and bring it through, 'cause it, whoever did it back, whenever, it stopped. And it never did get sponsored by a conscious person, and then it would go to the national, because when you put this thing on a national register and it's designated, then that opens up the doors with millions and millions of dollars that even y'all can undertake, go out. When we tried to get renovation money to help the city on this particular thing, that's when we found out that this building has never been designated, and it needs to be designated. that's when we found out that this building has never been designated and it needs to be designated, it needs to be put. Uh, cause you know, this building's been around a long time, so, once we get the paperwork and his declaration, I'll get it to, uh, Mr. Rizzo and the mayor, and they'll sign it, and all y'all have to do, accept it and designate, put the designation and everything else, the marker and all will be done, that's something we need to do.
Just to clarify, so who's taking the reins on the paperwork and the application?
It's already been sitting up there, Kyle, probably ten, twelve years.
Okay.
And it never been, it's finished, so I had, I asked Congressman Zell to look into it, and it's been sitting there at the base. So he's just gonna take it, final step and bring it to the national register, just get it registered. And it's just a formality now, because, uh, I think it was under Eddie's administration that it started. I think Mike Wade started, but never. The building.
The building.
Built.
Well, I'm just gonna tell y'all, with renovations going on, having worked with multiple buildings on the national register, you probably wanna get your renovations done, or they will come to a complete halt.
Well, they're gonna come look at it, yeah.
I have, I have a building that, that they couldn't even close up a, a wall that was completely graffiti, because the wall was historical and it was a, it's basically a cinder block poured wall. That if now, if you go into this twenty million dollar renovated building, I could point it out. I mean, so, just know, y'all have a lot of work going on that building, so before you go slap a national register on it, you probably wanna make sure that, that work is finished.
They'll, they'll make visits.
And, and I mean, millions of dollars more than what it will take you, because they make you go find certain products. You can't just go to the whole depot and find a door and replace it, you have to find that certain door or find an exact replica or have it made, so lots of strings attached to that, guys.
She's right, and they will send it, they will send a two man team to come look at the building before they put that, that mark, that moniker up, so it, it'll be done.
Tell them walk it slowly.
Well, it's, he's right, because, you know, this little bitty thing, I guess, I believe I was on the phone for two hours.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's just paperwork. Uh, the last thing I have is, uh, the depot, is the outside of depot gonna be painted? I was just asking, because I've been kind of out the loop, out of touch, and I have, so I'm pressured watching. I think that's it.
How's the attendance been at the, uh?
Well, of course, you know, I had a conversation, Mike Rizzo, you know, we, we having some problems with this elevator. And it's been on and off and off and on, been pretty much a nightmare, uh. Is it, it, it's been good, but then it's been drastic, because one of the things that I've discussed, I've discussed with Michael today was the buses. And the buses are like one of the city. So far, we've had sixteen of them that we have not been able to bring in, we brought one in last week when elevator was working. It was a pretty good day, we, when the buses come in there, we average about two hundred and eleven dollars a day in sales, believe it or not, per buck. So, uh, you know, we're, we're running behind, but we understand the renovations, we understand. The big thing is the, the elevator, Mike said that that was the thing he's looking at, he's talking with Wyckoff. Uh, you know, ADA compliant, and one of the things is, lately, Gary, to answer the question, we've been having trouble getting people in, because the only entrance the contractors have is through those back stairs, and we got people coming around the back. When they can't get up there and it doesn't, during everything, some days we just gotta say no and, but, uh, Mike's been briefed me on it today, supposed to meet with Wyckoff, and I think he's supposed to be giving a report to the cops, so. But, uh, we need that elevator to.
So it's not working right now?
Goes up and down.
Well, that's what it's supposed to do.
Works sometimes, doesn't work sometimes, we have some contract with standard that goes out there and services it.
Well, it's been about sixty days, I'm gonna be honest with you, you know, it works, it doesn't work, or it doesn't work, but.
It was down while parts was being ordered for a little while, and, and then they got it in and I think it's my understanding it's been working. Sometimes the contractor in there, with the work they doing, sets it off to where with the fire alarm, it won't go up and down with the fire alarm going on. So they gotta go reset the fire alarm.
Good luck. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Lon.
The comments from the council, alright. Hey, mayor's report, uh, first thing is motion to approve the mayor's reappointment of Casey Favre to the Bay St. Louis Waverlyn School Board for another five year term, beginning March first, twenty twenty-four.
Yeah, I think everybody received, you know, some information on, you know, to support the recommendation. I don't know if anyone has any questions. Again, I know ethics was brought up before, that's been settled, there's been reports and reports on that, you know, from the attorney general's office that, you know, he cannot be paid for this position and all. He reason, he receives no compensation on that, you know, there's a letter from the school board on that stating that he's never received any, any kind of funding from that. Open any questions or any concerns on, on this?
I mean, I'll, I'll go ahead and just make a comment, and mayor, thank you, I know with the letter, it was speaking to the accolades on Mr. Casey Favre and, and his time, uh, with the school board, so I think in, in that role, it's important to, to note the highlights and the good things. I think also, in a leadership role, you know, you've also gotta take accountability for, for sometimes things that, that fail. And so I, I go back to the bond and, and I don't, you know, I don't say that the bond proposal, um, in its entirety was a failure. I think the approach to it, um, I think it missed. And so, again, in that leadership role and being over, you know, the school board, um, you know, I, I, I look at it as, there are definitely needs in the school district, there's no doubt. Um, I think when we were sitting in here, when Mr. Favre was addressing the council, it was discussed, because there's been a lot of, there's a, a lot of discussion, there are a lot of citizens expressing their concerns, and the concerns weren't so much the bond, you know, and, and it would've been a, a heavy tax increase, but I think it was the full amount of it, so I think there was, you know, the question, uh, was posed, you know, why go for all when you can go for something, at least go for something less and compromise? And so, for whatever reason or not, the, the willingness to compromise was not there. And so unfortunately, the school district missed out on that opportunity and I, I have concerns that should that come up in the future, in a way it was handled and, and not listening to the concerns of the citizens on that amount, you know, I would hope that there would, if it's a lesser amount, that it would go through, but I just kinda worry in the way this is rolled out, I, I don't know, I don't know if it would or not, I do put that.
Can I, and I think, if I remember right, this had already been, you know, the board, the resolution has already been published, stating exactly what the money's for, there was no way to go back at that time to make any adjustments on it. You know, they had workshops, they had input, they had public hearings.
I don't think we were in part, we weren't really involved, I think we were kinda, but when this whole thing came about, I think we were a little bit blindsided by it, so I don't know what those, who was in those public workshops, but there was, it seemed like the resounding sentiment was, we're not opposed to the need for a bond, it's the, going, going for that amount.
I'm not against a grant, but, but you asking about, you know, being able to go back and reduce the amount of bond and all, and nothing happened. You know, by law, they not allowed to do that, it was already publicized what it was and everything, the resolution. So at the time, when it was, you know, the questions and all, and when you asked that question, you was told then that, you know, that it couldn't be done, because it was, the resolution was already out there for the amount of money and what it was to be used for.
And I, and I don't know, you know, what those focus groups were or advisory, and I, I would, I would've hoped that there was a, a good amount of representation from all on that one, but I guess, again, I, I'm surprised that, that, that didn't come up as a, a concern at the time, because that was a resounding concern throughout all of this was, was the full amount of, and what that tax burden would be for the next twenty years. And there were some things that really wouldn't, didn't have the answers to what that would've been, so again, I, I just.
And, and I think, you know, I think they realized, you know, they asked for the moon and didn't get it and all. And I think there is plans on coming back with a lesser of a bond, you know, putting it together, but I think they have so long to wait before that does happen, you know? Um, but again, you know, the reason it wasn't reduced at the time or even negotiated, is because by law, it's not, it wasn't allowed to be, you know? And, and again, I think they learned from it, um, I think it's the first time any of them's ever been through a bond or trying to get a bond.
Well, they got smaller bonds.
Huh?
They have several smaller bonds.
Yeah, but I don't know if anybody on the council was there at the time, I mean, the council, the board, at that time, when they got, I don't, I don't know, you know? But, you know, again, you know, we're, you know, my decision is based on, on what has, you know, happened since we took administration. We had a failing school system just about, I think he has been a part of it, I think our recommendations to the school board has been, you know, a big instrument, instrumental in bringing the school forward. You know, we, we're giving our kids a chance to succeed, um, you know, whether we agree with a bond or don't disagree with it. I think, you know, what has happened in the last six years since we've started making appointments, we've come a long way. Again, we went from a sixty, seventy ranked school to a eleven fifteen, I don't, I don't know that exact number, I don't have it, you know? And I think, you know, the, the members we have on board then, and that has been appointed, has been very instrumental in moving us forward, you know? So, I mean, you know, if, if it's something besides the bond or anything, I don't know. But because they make a decision and it fail, that's no different than when the council made a decision to go after two percent sales tax on food and beverage and lodging, you know? Wish we could've went back and took the food part off of and did just lodging, you know, maybe it would've passed four years ago. But to hold everybody accountable as, as a failure with everything this city has achieved in the last six, seven years would be, you know, to me is, is just a no brainer, you know? And, and that's just the thoughts of it, um, again, I, I, you know, I think you work, they work very well together. I think the administration and the school board has brought us a long way. And, and I think, you know, what they have done shows, you know, what can be done. You know, they giving our, our children an opportunity to succeed, and not only that, when, when businesses come in, when people look to move here, you know, one of the top two or three things they look at is our school system, we got two very fine private schools in our city, we're very fortunate. Well, three, you know, counting elementary and all that all the way, but we're very good. But to have a, an A rated school district to go along with it in the public side is, is very some, you know, very good, something to be very proud of at, in our community, considering where we was six years ago.
Now, I, I'd have to, you know, talk about when they were going for the bond, the tactics that were being used, especially against this council, were reprehensible, to say the least.
I don't know what they did against the council.
Well, I mean, uh, Mr. Turcot stood up there and, uh, basically insulted three council members on this board, because we send our kids to private schools. And, um, I mean, that rant that he had for thirty minutes, I mean, just some of the things that I saw during that, that whole election process, busing students on Sundays to people's houses and neighborhoods and things of that nature, using, you know, uh, school resources. Uh, I, I just, the whole thing was just ill-prepared and, and it goes back to leadership. And, um, so, and the last thing really is that, uh, I, I do think this is a conflict of interest, I think that, um, that, you know, nominating your son is, is, is nepotism at its strongest. And, um, I don't accept, you know, what was told to me, so I did file my own attorney general's opinion, I asked for one to be, uh, ruled on, and I have copies of the paperwork to put into the minutes and give to the councilman, to the city attorney. And I'll read this letter and tell you the response that was received, that I received back. Basically, the, from Janet Robinson, legal assistant, she says, Mr. Noblocka, the office attorney general is in receipt of your request for issuing insurance of an expedited official opinion received on January twenty-fifth of two thousand twenty-four. Draft opinions are subject to a rigorous review process prior to issuance. We are aware, however, of the circumstances prompting your request for expedited issuance of an official opinion. That's because the, the, uh, they usually take office in the first week of, first meeting of March. The timeline for an expedited request is between forty-five and seventy-five days. However, we will strive to get you an answer as soon as possible. If you have any materials, documents or legal authority relevant to your request, you may forward the same to our attention. Also, if additional facts arise affecting your pending request or the matter becomes subject to litigation, please contact opinions and policy division. For informational purposes pursuant to Mississippi Code annotated section seven point five or seven dash five dash twenty-five, attorney general opinions may only be issued upon questions of Mississippi law. Uh, official opinions may not be issued in response to requests requiring determinations of fact or an interpretation of federal law or requests involving contract interpretations, past action or matters pending before a court or administrative forum. An attorney general opinion is not a substitute for advice and counsel of attorneys who represent governmental agencies and officials on a day-to-day basis, if you have any questions, call more sincerely, uh, Janet Robinson. So basically, I'm gonna ask that, that until this opinion is ruled on, you know, that we don't have any vote on this, but that's up to the council, council.
You know, we, there was opinions last time when we went through this.
But I wanted one case specific, specific.
There was another follow-up after it was, the appointment was made and the ruling still came back the same. You know, as long as you don't get paid, you know, there's no conflict or anything, you know, related.
Well, based on that though, Mike, I mean, after reading, reading the, the law, I mean, based on that, you can appoint your son, your whole family on the commission, and there would be no recourse as long as they don't take money. So that's why I say that, you know, I, I wanted it case specific and, uh, you know, but it's like.
I think it was case specific last time.
No, no, no rulings were made based on, on your appointment of Casey to the board from previous, it was just an opinion, I have that opinion, if you'd like.
Yeah. They're not gonna rule on it.
I, I did check, I did not see any opinions that the city, did you, did you file, ask for one like this? That that was after, that's right.
I have spoke to the ethics commissioner and got it cleared through the ethics commissioner.
Well, I didn't talk to them, I just talked to the attorney generals based on, uh, um, based on the statute.
So I went to the ethics commissioner this go round to reiterate, um, not gonna sit here and tell you, I can recall everything for five years, five years ago, because that would be untruthful and a lie, but what I think happened last go round, I think, um, I spoke on the phone at length multiple times with the attorney general's office. So I think that's why I was comfortable enough giving the opinion that I did, probably at a public meeting, um, five years ago, and then you guys made, made the appointment. I will tell you, five years ago, the AG's staff, they had multiple staff members there that are not currently, that's not the way the current AG has things set up, but you could call and you could bounce things off of technicalities of the AG's opinion, I mean, at the AG's office, and you could talk to them for hours at length, they had multiple people in their office at the time to, to discuss things.
Well, I called them, but they, they said that I really needed to file the paperwork, so that's why I filed it.
As I said, it's a much different approach, you have a new attorney general and her technicalities or opinions division is completely separate in the way Tom Hood handled things. How long's Lynn Fitch been there, two and a half years?
So we, we don't have anything on paper on that, though, from five years ago? In that discussion with AG, it was just the verbal?
Yes. At least I'd have to go, go back and look, I mean, I, I did not know about this opinion today, this has never been discussed with me, nobody asked me to bring any of this, I did not receive any phone calls, so I would've been happy to go back and, you know, look to see what I had, if I had anything in my files, but I was never asked.
So would they even issue an opinion since he is currently on the board?
No, they've told me that they'll issue an opinion, so that's what they're doing right now.
About whether he is currently on the board, probably not.
That's right.
A reappointment, they may would.
Well, the, the letter says that there, I, I disclosed that, if you leave the application, that he currently sits on the board, he does not receive pay. And that, but they did say, and I did not notate that he was up for reappointment. And, um, so that's why they were saying they were gonna try to give us an expedited thing, so yes, they are gonna provide something to us.
Cause I just, when I said pass that, I didn't know if that meant they wouldn't rule on it since.
Well, sometimes what they will give you is a ruling that says they will not rule on it. Sometimes they will give you a ruling that says they will not rule on it, but given the set of, you know, facts, this is what they think would apply, but this is not an official ruling. So it just depends on who it's assigned to, who gets it, and quite frankly, how Lynn Fitch handles it. Because it's, things are, like I said, much, much different now, and they're the first one I asked for, for her office, I think took over a year to get back. I'm sure they have gotten it, that was also, she had just taken office, so.
When's this appointment expire?
The end of the month. And the way school board appointments work, there's no holdover process. So, you know, some of the boards that you guys make appointments to, it basically works as a rollover. So if you don't do an appointment, they keep, you know, they can keep serving. A school board appointment does not work like that. The day that the term expires, the term expires, so that person is no longer an eligible voting member.
That's correct. And, uh, so, but that's happened before, you know, where they've had four, um, trustees on the board at one time before, uh, one was reappointed. I mean, I think they went as long as six months, so, I mean, I don't think this is, uh, out of the ordinary. I mean, it's just, just need my own answers.
So February twenty ninth, they fired basically.
Smith, do you have any, Mr. Smith, do you have any, uh, legal advice you could partake with us to give us any guidance and direction?
I mean, again, I talked to the Ethics Commission to make sure that we did not have any ethical issues. And since there is no pecuniary or financial gain from this, he assured me that there was no ethical issues.
And who was that?
If this was, if he was, if he was reconfirmed and the Attorney General came back with a different opinion that it's nepotism, then he could be removed from the board. As he's appointed.
Once he's sworn in, he's in for the term. I mean.
He isn't for the term. That is, it's a, it's a term. Now, it gets a little different if it came back and it said they were a violation of.
And the state statute, state law, he could be.
Gary, what opinion were you referencing?
Couldn't he be removed?
Um, can I send it to you? Because honestly, I printed it out, but I didn't, I didn't bring it with me.
Can you pull it up so I can come read it?
So we got another meeting. That can be done. I don't know. Let me get, get some more legal opinions to figure out what we needed to do.
Uh, Josh, I think Mr.
Yes, okay. Um, I think we've got two members of the audience that may want to address this.
Just give me a second. I'll pull that up.
Okay. Mr. Thorpe, you wanna step up for a second, please? Give you a few minutes briefly? Thanks, sir.
Ron Thorpe, one oh two Leopold. And, uh, I really did not intend to say anything here tonight, but I wanna approach this in just a little bit of a different view. Uh, one of, first, I wanna start out on a positive. I cannot say enough good things about what Dr. Reed has done for this school system. Uh, the mayor brought out, she took us from being way down, way up, and it's been very consistent. And I probably agree with her on about ninety five percent of everything that she's done. Going to the school board, uh, and I don't wanna beat the bond issue to death again. But, uh, just so you remember, the reason they came up with thirty seven million, five hundred thousand is the largest bond you can have. It's fifteen percent of what your total assets are. So the school district has total assets of two hundred and fifty million dollars. And as you were bringing out earlier in this meeting, uh, Councilman Seal, that in the past, you all don't feel like you've done the very best at managing building. Well, the school board, present and past, has not done a good job at looking at problems and solving them since Katrina and maintaining their buildings and looking to the future. So the buildings during that course of time were going down for a short period of time after Katrina. Enrollment went from twelve hundred back up to a high of nineteen hundred, and then it started decreasing again. And where I have sworn off politics, I haven't been there for the last couple of years, and I cannot tell you what the enrollment is today. But I'm gonna give a guess that it's somewhere between fifteen hundred and seventeen hundred. We have not gained in population with the young people, and the demographics on that comes about because people with families that are moving here cannot afford the houses that are here. And those that can't afford the houses do send them to the private schools. And of course, a lot more people are being educated by homeschooling. These are all things that have gone against an increase in population in the enrollment in spite of the good work that Dr. Reed has done. On the bond, what I wanted to talk about is sixty one percent of the people voted no on that bond. Mike and I disagreed on the bond, and it has not caused any conflict between us. And I spent over ten thousand dollars of my personal money to defeat that bond. I banged on two thousand doors in the Bay Waveland School District, and I had the privilege of talking with hundreds of people. And what I learned from that, I brought to the school board, I brought to supervisors, I brought here. And I finally came to the conclusion that I was just batting my head against the wall. And I said, I can use my time, my energy, and my financial resources for something better than fighting this fight, and I gave up. And I've donated my time to the Cancock County Historical Society and to the Knights of Columbus and a few other nonprofits. And, uh, uh, I feel much more rewarded versus just banging my head against the wall. But I wanna go back to the hundreds of people that I talked to that were of all economic levels, all ethnic levels. And I got the same thing over and over and over again. And they were not happy with various conditions in, within the school. Also, much to my surprise, I ran into several, I'm gonna say ten, about ten people that had lawsuits against the school for various things that had gone on. And, uh, they just didn't feel as though as citizens, they were being represented properly. And when they went to school board meeting, they found that they could not talk to the school board. And I had watched this over and over again. I attended every school board meeting for years. Uh, and just as aside on this, on bond, if the bond is less than four million dollars to the best of my dollars, they don't have to come to the public. They can just pass those small bonds on their own. Above a certain point, you then have to go to the public. That's why you have small bonds and the big bonds. People want change. And I'm not going with. Of one school district, although I I found that people really did not care whether we have one school district or two school districts in this county. But what they were most concerned about was not people being appointed to the school board. They all wanted the privilege to elect people to the school board. And I can stand here and tell you right now that if we were having an election and Mike, this has nothing against you. I would spend another ten thousand dollars to have Casey beat in the election, and I'm sure that I'd get sixty one percent. Just like we got on the school, on the screen. People do not want the same people in year after year after year. They want to have the opportunity and the privilege to have change if they want it. Some of you have been sitting here for four decades. He started when he was twelve. But we've all had the privilege. If we got tired of this man, we could get rid of him if we wanted to put the effort into it. We haven't. He's done a good job. People on this council have been removed because people in their area wanted somebody new. The citizens of Bay St. Louis do not get that privilege. We just have to go with the appointment wherever the mayor is. And, uh, I think at this particular time, I'd give real consideration to saying, let's not reappoint this man. Let's start having elections for the school board. Now I'm through with politics for another two years. I thank you all. Your building looks great.
Thank you, Thorpe.
The light, they make everybody fall, pet sky, dwell much.
Thank you. Thank you, Thorpe. Mr. John. Maybe I found that.
Oh, she's.
Yeah, so.
I sent her the one that I had.
Yeah, so with that, the I'm shepherding it real quick, but that's the statute is if money is paid out of public funds. And so that is the the deal here, which is clarified by the letter from the school district, that there is no public funds that's being used. My understanding is I know Casey waives his per diem, and that's if it was a statutory, I mean, a salary position, he wouldn't be able to do that. But they have consistently said there's a difference between a salary and a per diem. So he has waived his per diem, and he's taken it a step further. He's, he does not receive reimbursements. I believe he pays for his own training, so he receives no financial duties or benefits from the school district. And there was a statement from the school district saying as such.
But what's, what I find interesting about this particular opinion is that it 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 talks about a three part analysis to determine whether a nepotism statute applies to a particular employment or appointment. And so that is reason, um, uh, you know, it's versus a party related within the fir, the third degree in this case, yes. And secondly, is the relative who is the public official, the appointing authority, yes. And it just talks about, uh, it's the position, one of five specific, specific positions listed in the nepotism statute, and it lists it up, up further. But like I said, I think just, you know, just going forward, it's just, I wanted to get an updated opinion and make sure that we're doing the right thing. And, uh, you know, I mean, waiting is not, you know, denying, it's just, it's just making sure we got all our Ts and cross our Is and cross our Is, that's cool. Um, but what I'm saying is, it's just, it's, but it's up to y'all. I mean, it could take seventy five days between we get this, another month and a half or whatever, but.
We'll let Mr. Omen speak real quick, and then we'll have a decision. Go ahead, sir.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
Go ahead, and you got this floor.
John Omen, one ten Demont, was an avenue. Uh, like Mr. Thorpe, I had no intention on my way here this evening of addressing anything about one subject or another. And, um, pretty clear, I'm not equipped to address any of the legal issues or anything with the Attorney General's office or any of the rest of it. Uh, but while I was sitting here, you know, we heard the word nepotism. Nobody liked the word nepotism. But we all know, we live in a county and a city with relatively low population density, which is one of the things that makes it a special place to be. And in those circumstances, uh, you know, if you say, well, can't appoint somebody because his name is this, that, or the other thing, uh, you're gonna eliminate an awful lot of qualified people. I've worked, I shouldn't say worked, but I've observed Casey Far at three different agencies, including the Sheriff's Department and with, uh, CASA and through the Salt Council at seniors and law enforcement together. And as an individual, I haven't met, uh, as fine a person as Casey since I've lived here. And this is, I don't see eye to eye with the mayor very often at all. Sometimes we do, but. I would like to specifically say regarding Mr. Lewis's comments about the, uh, his discussion with the mayor. I was at the meeting, the first one, after that bond issue was defeated. And Casey laid out, um, uh, an explanation of some of what the mayor said about the fact that the law prevented them from doing anything. Once that became a campaign, their hands were pretty tied. And at that particular meeting, he was pretty effective in going, okay, now at least I can say something. And I sat there and I think, damn, if that had been televised earlier, that vote would have been a lot closer, if not necessarily in their favor. So I don't have any other recommendation to make, uh, regarding that. It's all up to you, but, uh, personally, I'm very happy seeing Casey Far as president of the school. Thanks.
Thank you. Joanna? No.
Okay.
Just.
Well, I'm Joanna Osborne, and I am currently serving on the school board. And I just wanna say that Casey does a great job. He truly cares for the kids. I know that the bond was an issue, but I think it's more important that we look into the future and not focus so much on the past and take that as a learning opportunity. And I think it's important to keep him because of how much he cares.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
So, for fright, Mississippi has a hundred and forty four school districts. Bay Waveland School District is eleventh in the state. Two thousand eighteen, they were sixtieth. Two thousand eighteen, they were sixtieth in the state of Mississippi. Six years, not one person, not one board, but in total, the school district has turned around to be successful. Huge. Not one person has done that. Um, you know, you look at, and Bay Waveland School District has the third highest graduation rate out of the top eleven schools. That'll be in one, Long Beach being two, Bay Waveland is three. It's pretty huge. Um, they've increased their test scores over fifty points. In two thousand twenty two, they were seven oh two total. Two thousand twenty three, they're seven fifty two. To continue to get better. Again, not one person is doing that, but as a group, the leadership, um, from the school board, the school, to the teachers, to the janitors, to everyone has made a difference. Uh, Bay Waveland High School, Bay High School is Mississippi's number one ranked high school in reading proficiency, number one in the state. Not one person, not one superintendent, but a group of people being led, working together, has made a dramatic turnaround in Bay Waveland School District. I think the board is doing well. I said I wasn't gonna talk, I wasn't gonna be emotional, but it's, uh, they've done a great job. And Casey is, like him or not, he's the president, and he is helping get things better, in my opinion. He has done a great job. Um, if it's not legal, I think they'll come and tell us it's not legal, and he could be removed at that time.
I don't think that's gonna be an option. I mean, what's the harm in waiting? If you wanna force the vote, then that's this council's decision.
Yeah. I mean, it depends on, you know, if one council wants to vote against it, or everybody wants to vote against it, then it goes down, right? If I vote for it, then it passes, right?
But you wouldn't, you wouldn't wanna err on waiting and see what the state Attorney General has to say.
I mean, it could be forty five to seventy day. I mean, I, it's my opinion. I don't, I didn't say I was getting ready to make a motion.
Oh, okay. I was just, you're just talking like you are. I'm sorry.
Well, 'cause I, I, I think he's done a great job.
Okay.
Right? And can, and I, and I ask, right, can, if we appoint him today, can he legally be removed? If it's.
I don't know.
You know, and that's, that's why I ask about opinion, right?
But if he found out he was violating a nepotism statute and doing something that would potentially be criminal, um, I'm sure he would step down. But again, you know, I could have put a whole brief on this had I, I had been asked, but Gary read to you the, the three part test, which is consistently throughout years, and I'm sitting here going through, just, I'm only human, so there's a hundred and fifty AG's opinions are not, they all know these are all AG's opinions. You typically wouldn't have court cases against this that deal with twenty five, one fifty three, which is your nepotism statute. And, you know, I, there's nothing out there that trumps that test. So if you ask me for my legal opinion, which is, I'm pretty sure what happened five years ago, when you go through the, the test, since there, if, if Casey was taking a two hundred dollar a month per diem, or if he was receiving compensation, then you would have a nepotism issue. But because of that financial pecuniary benefit, the fact that it is not there, that is what makes it legal to do.
And Councilman Soffield, if you mind, if I can just mention something. I, I did just wanna bear mentioning, I wanna thank Mr. Thorpe, always enlightening and the knowledge he brings. And and one, one sticking point that that really stood out, and I've said it before, and I'll continue to say it, and we, with this council visited that. The resounding sentiment, I think, in those two thousand doors and citizens you knocked on was having a representation that they have an ability to elect. Unfortunately, we, we visited that with a resolution and didn't pass. But I do think that is something that we really need to consider in the very near future, again, because it does, we all know, it holds accountability to decisions. So I wanna thank Mr. Thorpe for giving us that information. Just wanna reiterate, that has been explored, but as council, unfortunately, it did not pass.
I can send all the information back out about how you can legislate to have school board appointments. I got, got all records in the file, and we can send it back out and we'll look at it.
We already have one that, for now, that is elected, and it's interesting, you know, voted against the bond, probably because of. For now, that, that is elected and it's interesting, you know, voted against the bond, probably because of hearing the constituents' citizens' concerns about getting it back in.
Yeah, again, I think we've batted that ball around for a while too, trying to figure out what the, what the best thing is as well, so. I, I don't know where, you know, do we wait till the, the next meeting?
And I'll, well, I will reiterate, there's a twenty twenty opinion that uses the exact same three-part test. In this opinion, it was a sheriff's son being unpaid auxiliary and it went through the three-part test. So, I mean, so basically unless the AG is gonna completely overrule twenty years' worth of opinions, then you're still valid.
Still valid, okay.
So if you had two weeks, you would not change your opinion on your opinion?
No, no.
So you couldn't do any more research and say, yeah?
No, the research is what they're, yeah, the research is what they're.
So delaying a vote two weeks would have the same result?
Yeah.
Any other discussion from the other council? I just know that, um, it's not broken, it's working, getting better, like him or not, it's a job now. Maybe the school board needs to look at being a little more open to public opinion at their meetings possibly. Haven't been to one in a while. I don't know. Maybe, maybe they are open. But I think the public that funsies into these should have opportunity to be heard. At any meeting, that's why we allowed some tonight that wasn't on the agenda, I guess, because they do pay the bills. It is their money we're spending. So I do feel we, we should listen, whether we vote what they say or not, it's still, they should have the right to express their opinion since we're writing checks with their money. So, um, if the school board is not allowing that, I would like for them to be more open to it, in my opinion. Um, as far as the appointment tonight, if the opinion's not gonna change. I think this school is in a good direction.
Well, the, the last thing I will tell you on that topic is that la- that opinion that I was just referencing is a twenty twenty appendi- opinion out of Lynn Fitch's office. So, just that, that is a recent, I mean, that's important to me.
Everybody's making decisions and saying that it's, that nothing can happen.
Y'all pay me for my legal opinion and my legal opinion, when you have multiple AG's per year, so if you're asking me today, based off of twenty years' worth of history, you have even consistent within the same AG's office, you have, this, this is the test, this is what it is, so.
Can I have a question? Do y'all allow people to talk at y'all's meeting?
Do y'all video the meetings? No.
Let me just address that for one minute.
Okay. Step up, please.
Sign in, you can address, they limit it to three minutes. You ask for any information, and this is another reason that I stopped and just beat my head against the wall. You ask, you request information, you turn in the form. I was being charged a hundred, two hundred, three hundred dollars. I was spending a lot of money each month because they don't give you the information you're requesting for free. They don't have to. And they would charge me per copy, per hour, and it was kind of excessive. Uh, this has nothing to do with the school board. School boards in all of Mississippi, through their hierarchy, have set up a system where it is not representative for the people to go to a school board. They do not have to answer any questions that anybody brings. They don't have to recognize anybody that wants to come there and talk. That's the power that they have through the administration of the school boards in Mississippi. Uh, it's kind of interesting, once you get in there, seeing how it works. And I, again, just found a lot of arrogance in what was happening. And that's why I go back to having a true representative by having people elected.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
So, pleasure the council is to wait, or what do y'all want to do?
I'll make a motion that we wait till the attorney gen- official attorney general's opinion come out.
Okay. Mr. Nublock made a motion to wait for the AG's opinion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Lewis? Discussion?
Let, let me, would you discuss him? Okay, when, when does his term run out? Yeah, this month. So, uh, when Maurice's term ran out, that alleviated and he couldn't be, uh, on the board anymore. So.
That's why he shouldn't have went on that trip.
So if Casey's term run out, waiting on the opinion, he can't be on the board anymore.
For that time, until we get rid of him, until we vote him in or.
Correct. So they'd operate as a four-man board with a vacancy.
Wait, wait. Uh, if his term runs out at the end of this month?
Yes, sir.
You're saying that, uh, we can still vote him in after that? Is, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, there was just, there will be a, a gap period with a vacancy on the board. So the Bay Waveland School District will be ran by a four-member board.
So there would just be possibly a few month period where there would be nobody in that seat.
And I filed this back in, so, twenty-fifth, I think.
Twenty-ninth?
Twenty-fifth and you responded on the twenty-ninth. So you could have it within, like I said, they, they said they, they're gonna expedite it and, um, they're gonna go as fast as they can, based on the amount of research that they have to do. I mean, I respect what they have to do. So your motion is to wait until we get an opinion, not till? Yeah, it could be, I could be completely off-base and, you know, but at least we'll know that we're good. Okay. Any further discussion on that motion? Vote that motion?
Aye.
We're voting right now?
The, uh, motion is to wait till we get the AG's opinion, which may allow the term to expire. At the vacancy.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay.
Thank you.
Then if it comes back, we'll.
And then America can put him right back up for appointment?
Yes, sir, yes.
No harm?
Yep. So, we'll cover all bases. Uh, discussion of McCl- McDonald Park, I'm sorry. Got my glasses on.
I, I, I wanted to say something on that also.
Yes, sir.
One of the things that, um, you know, in dealing with leadership and training leadership and certainly this is a leadership position, um, one of the things that we, as councilmen, uh, we deal with people. We are, I mean, we're elected by the people, we're elected by our citizens and, uh, uh, one of the things that I have, you know, tried hard to do as a leader is to just add value to people. And many times you can't add, add value to people unless you see people as being valuable. And, you know, just listening, you know, we pray the prayer, uh, tonight and we pray it all the time. And, um, and sometimes I think we just go through the motion and saying it because part of that press is, you know, um, forgive us our debts as we forgive those, you know, um, that are indebted to us. Uh, forgive us our sins, just like we forgive other people's sins, so, uh, that's something I live by, that's something that, um, you know, I teach leaders to live by, uh, and it's basically, you know, the golden rule, you do unto others as you would have others do, uh, do unto you. So, uh, I, you know, I've heard both sides and, you know, looking at where the school board has come from uh, and the school system has come from and see where it is now. Um, I consider each one, each individual on that school board as being somebody who's valuable, uh, not only to, uh, citizens of our area, uh, they're valuable to those students and they're just valuable individuals, whether they're male or female. So, um, I mean, it's a great principle, uh, to live by. Uh, you, we, we, we've got to give people the benefit of the doubt, uh, and I've made mistakes in the past. Uh, and all of us have made mistakes in the past. And some of the mistakes we've made in the past, I mean, we're just, we're not, you know, uh, proud of those mistakes, but, uh, you know, you can't hold that particular thing over an individual's head because we're going forward. And in going forward, uh, you know, uh, there's something I heard, you know, today, sometimes we win, sometimes we learn. You know, so, uh, you know, we learn from, you know, the things that where we didn't so much hit the mark. Uh, and because we didn't hit the mark, that don't make us invaluable, you know, we're still valuable. So we've got to see everybody as being, uh, valuable, so, uh, I think it's a good idea that we did, uh, put this in place tonight that we're gonna wait and, uh, but I consider each one on that board again as being valuable individuals and I, I, um, really like, you know, where the school has gone and where it's going and the direction it's heading in. Thank you.
You're welcome, um, and I'm just gonna clarify my vote, it's not a vote against Casey by no means, because I think he is a leader on that board. I think he is instrumental to where the board and the school district has gone, um, and so.
I'd like to say something else too. They charge for the information, they get the same as Bay St. Louis charges for information when they put in for it. You know, if his bill was that much, you know.
I requested a lot.
Yeah, so, so they, just like anybody else, you know? I think there was one in Hancock getting charged some and charged some, got a whole bunch of stuff up there, you know, at the superintendent up there or something. I don't know, but they, they, they have, you know, costs to cover, same as Bay St. Louis. When you wanna request, you pay for it.
Yes.
You know, and what he re- Mr. Thorpe requested, I have no idea what bill was two hundred, three hundred dollars, you know, whatever it was and all, but I'm sure he had it broke down to what the cost was, so, you know.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Like I said, I think they've done a great job and that's not a vote against Casey, I think. I think we have a great school system, so wait on this opinion, comes back, we can do it. Uh, I would look forward to the put Casey back up in front of us, so we can keep the school district rolling. Thank you.
Thank y'all.
McDonald.
Very much the prudent thing to do is to wait.
Yes.
There's no harm in it.
Yes. Yes, sir. Uh, discussion on McDonald Park, Mayor.
Yes, um, with this, we had a request to put on an art and craft show there. Um, they didn't want to use the depot grounds because they didn't want to pay to use it. You know, it's, it's, they're charging vendors to come in as well, but they seen this as a way to get a fee, nothing. But it's not set up for, we don't have electricity, we don't have that. And, and since then, we, you know, we've never allowed that type of activity at that park or any of our, you know, local parks. You know, I, I believe that that's what the depot has back there and it's, you know, we have it. And, but if, if it does, or if the council approves to have these events there, then we need to set up a fee for this as well. You know, but what we have to remember though is, you know, again, we have no electricity that's there and all. All our parks, commer- neighborhood parks like that, alcohol is forbidden, you know, that was one of the things. They wasn't selling it, but somebody was coming in, selling, told them they couldn't have it and all. So, so it's just something to think about. You know, our recommendation for this event was to deny it there. If you want the depot grounds, use the depot grounds for the event, that's set up for it. And she asked, you know, could it come before the council and this and that, you know, whether, you know, the event is this right here. Yeah, it's just an art and craft event, uh, they're charging vendors to come in, but they don't want to pay a, a fee to use the ground.
Mike, when you say fifty-plus attendance, is that like fifty booze? Or fifty people just coming in going, look, vendors, I mean, vent fifty vendors?
That, you know, I, I don't know what that meant on that one.
The issue I have with that, if they're charging vendors and we don't have any agreement with them, the liability, I mean, I, I mean, it's.
Right.
I, I've seen something there, I've seen, I, I don't know if it's a sanction, but it looks like there was almost kind of a huge table set up and like a yard sale together, one, it's probably last year, but.
Church or something.
Yeah, but that, which, this is different, if they're charging vendors to actually set up there.
That, that was church, you know, a church has come in and asked about it, you know, that pavilion's been used for very little, and that's a shame, you know, that it's not used more and everything. But it was, you know, churches coming in, groups and all this and that, you know, just wanting to set up a couple of tables there and have it, is used for picnics and all people and, and again, it's not, it's not entirely left to them, the grounds and all, you know, other people come and, and use it as well, you know, so.
Yeah, um.
But, you know.
I think I asked a question a while back. This almost is a business, putting an event on there, would they be, are they gonna be required to have general liability insurance that covers Bay St. Louis's?
They, they're all, they all have to have that at, at the, um, depot and all.
But yes. Yeah, that's a big part where it wouldn't be required if they.
So, you know, again, if we are gonna allow it, then we need to charge and all, but our recommendation is not to allow those type events there on those grounds.
Well, and that's kinda, I know it's probably not a long-term, I mean, that's where we're playing in a pickleball course anyway, so I don't think that's gonna be, it's gonna have much space there, you know, down the road. But I'd say, go ahead and, I, like you said, it's not equipped for it. We do have areas that it is equipped for, they have paying vendors, we have agreements in place specific to those areas that, that discusses the concerns that Councilman Soffe has with liability and taxes and all that, so.
So, un- unless y'all, you know, wanna have it, we're gonna deny and recommend the depot. Thank y'all.
So this is a special event permit, signed by the administration. So do you either approve or deny this event, not the city council?
Correct.
Okay, so you're denying it?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm good with it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine, yeah, I just don't know.
Unless y'all want to change it to what, you know, we use it for and, you know, yeah, we didn't even want to bring it, but told, you know, they asked and all and, and.
Thank the parks instead of parks.
You know, again.
Yep, good point, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else, Mayor?
No, sir.
All right. Council business, um, most to a point, Caitlin Bush was Deputy Municipal Clerk, and I think that is due to her finishing up a class that she needs to have that.
Yes.
For, so.
It's left out. You forgot to put it on the minutes, didn't you?
It's a requirement to graduate the service by municipal clerk.
Good deal.
I think she's ready to graduate.
Gotta have a motion.
Yes, sir.
Motion.
Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second? Mr. Reed? Any further discussion? Vote a motion, oh. Okay. Vote a motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. All right. You have something, Mr. Nublock?
He's good.
I was gonna ask if she gonna frame it and put it up here.
Yeah, huh, show us that certification. Um, B, motion to approve and authorize the ministry to review the agreement between the City of Bay St. Louis and Civic Plus for the minutes and agenda management program with one-time startup fee of fifteen hundred dollars and an annual fee of fifty-two hundred dollars and terminate the existing contract with Granicus ending May thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
How come we're gonna terminate Granicus? What's, what's the issue?
I think this is for the new website and all the new stuff.
It's going away too in twenty twenty-four.
So Granicus has been, I'm thinking Caitlin can speak to it, is more, probably more in-depth because she deals with it. The, oftentimes we'll come in here and there's problems with it and she has to call, get online. The price is about twelve thousand a year between the software and the streaming. MuniCode, where we've got our, uh, code of ordinances as well as our website, which hopefully will be going live in the next couple of weeks. Um, also has a, um, agenda minutes software for about half the price. And then, uh, the county actually just switched over the last year from MuniCode, I'm sorry, from Granicus to Civic Plus as well. Both their code of ordinances are getting put on right now, uh, their minutes and. Both their code ordinances are getting put on right now, uh, their minutes and agendas as well as their website. Um, so it's about half the price, um, it, it works, it works well, the county's been using it, Diamond Head uses MuniCode as well.
Yeah, so MuniCode and Civic Plus are.
Yeah, they're one and the same, they're the same company, there's just different types of softwares. So, but it's just, the Granicus expires when the renewal, basically last year when we looked at it during the summer, we didn't have a choice, we, we had to renew it. Um, so we put in the budget basically trying to go, okay, let's look for this transition. We put a ticker in our calendar, it's a January, that gives us most six months to make the transition.
Theoretically, this is gonna streamline our, our Granic- I mean, our minute software with our MuniCode and the website, and it's gonna be about half the price.
So if you go to the website and you search something, it'll search your code of ordinances, your website and all your minutes and agendas, all in one place.
In MuniCode.
But searching all of them, yeah, they're all tied to link, linked together, but it's also, again, it's half the price.
What about the migration of what's in the pa- I mean, if we get rid of Granicus, I know it's now one and the same in the company, but I saw in there, there's a fee to migrate all the videos. I mean, we'll still have accessibility for the history and the library of the old videos?
Correct, again, Caitlin spoke to him more than I have, but that was a big question of what about the migration of current data?
Yes, that's what I was told, they would be able to migrate everything, it could take anywhere between eight and twelve weeks to do. But, um, they've dealt with Granicus in the past, um.
Yeah, the county just went through the same process and moved all their data, uh, but that was like last summer.
And as I've noted, Granicus, their minute track is ending, like, they're ending the life of the program by the end of twenty twenty-five, so. We really don't have a choice, we have to find an alternate.
You either have to upgrade with their software or go find something different.
And this, this program, I've done two demonstrations on and it's so much easier, so much more user friendly.
Do, do we need to have a length of term on the cert- on the con- agreement? I didn't see, cause it's just an auto renew year to year, I think, so do we need to have an end date? Are we able to go into something without an ending date?
Uh, I mean, yeah, cause it's just an automatic renewal, so I don't have the, my computers have a problem, so I don't have this stuff in front of me. But, yeah, you can, you can cancel it, I mean, it has a term, even if it automatically.
Right, I, I just didn't know, but I. Previous roles in government entities are, we always have a, we couldn't go into agreement without an ending date, couldn't go beyond certain number of years. Yeah, it's just a, yeah, it's a sixty day notice to get out of it. Begin date and then just auto renew.
And again, we'll use, uh, YouTube, which the city already has a channel set up from previous, before Granicus. And, um, it will be a lot better quality and sound because of what we're using right now through Granicus, is that little encoder over there? Well, they can't update that, so basically, you know, that, that's like a turtle, this is the hair.
Well, everybody complains the sound is always terrible.
And that's Granicus, so they can't do anything about it, so.
Okay, motion? Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second, Hoffman? Was your question more going past all term and office?
Um, yeah.
Mr. Lewis?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, you can cancel that anyway, so.
Generally can't obligate the next board to anything, so, okay. Any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes seven zero, council business, new, old, Mr. Huffman.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Reed?
Oh, yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, we have some lights, I, I noticed first block of Main Street here, the lights are out.
Yes.
And, uh, then just around town, is there, uh, maybe, maybe some of the offices that can not take?
Yes, the ones on Main Street, uh, Mississippi Power, uh, somebody was drilling and hit a line, pulled some out, waiting. Make sure we get eight-one-one call, gotta see how bad it is and do that, that's, that's up there on the five-hundred block for that. Around town, yeah, trying to get something to where our offices, when they riding around, to try to take an address where they at and everything as well. Um, the lo- the, the, the city lights, we do have somebody that's working on them, pretty much continues. Where they riding around and, and, and looking, that's the problem.
I know we have some out on Washington also, I, I haven't counted how many, but, uh, there's some out there.
Say, is it like in a row?
No, they're individuals, one on Main Street is in a row there.
Yeah, that, that's two on out there, but a lot of times they go in too and flip them switches and either not put them back or somebody go in and switch, swap it and just turn them off or whatever. I'll check the lights.
But I would tell you, if anytime you see a street light out and you have an address or something, if y'all send us an email, we can communicate, Mississippi Power and Coast Electric, send, they will send a truck out there and fix that light.
Okay.
Just a quick email to us and we can fire it off to them, basically just an address.
Count them and, uh, see how many of that.
Was I doing my wool not right around night? I got some orange flag and tape and I'll get out and I'll flag the pole with orange tape, so when I report it to them, I can tell them, look for the orange flag and they'll go to that pole and know which one's out.
I'll send them by there tomorrow.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
And I know some Washington street coming in, on the other side of the stop signs for Spanish Trail, the lights was on probably hour and a half, two hours before dark, I think. That was last night.
They, they might've got left on.
Okay.
And, and manual instead of automatic.
Ah, yeah, cause they was on during the day when I came through there, I think yesterday.
I'll, I'll get them to check for Washington.
Mr. Seal?
Nothing new.
Nothing new, Mr. Noblock?
Um, talking about streetlights, the streetlights on six oh three, you need a whole roll of tape over there.
Six oh three's all working pretty much.
Well, I was coming in by the Exxon station and they were all out, there was a large section out.
No wind though.
No what?
Wind.
Wind?
When did it happen?
Oh, wind, I mean, just the other day, I, my, my daughter.
Cause they had them all working that's there. Some of them, matter of fact, on that, I'm not sure if that's the end, but one, in some areas, they, they leaving them because of photo cell, they waiting on that to come in. They stay there on, staying on twenty-four seven, that could be one of them things there too, where it might've got flopped automatic and it shouldn't be, but I'll check that. Is it a str- a whole run of them?
Yeah, it was, it was, it was a long stretch.
Yeah, I just.
But, you know, that was like over the weekend I saw that, so, you know, it could've been the storms, it could've, it could've changed.
So up by the, by the interstate?
Uh, yeah, yeah, exactly.
Now, oh, um, another thing I'll bring up, okay, so we talked about a billboard moratorium, uh, do we wanna proceed with that?
Were they supposed to have something for this meeting or next meeting?
Yeah, gonna try to have for next.
Jeremy is, Jeremy is working on, man, but it's not ready, prepared to y'all, but it basically, strips out billboards and basically says, billboards are not allowed in the City of Bay St. Louis. And it says, if they're there, they're grandfathered, um, and again, I'm just paraphrasing here from what I read. Um, if it gets sixty percent or damaged, you basically can't put it back up.
That's the state guideline too.
So that's kind of, what's it, kind of, where it's kind of leading based on what y'all have said to us.
So like if a billboard.
But I, we're preparing to bring that to y'all.
So if a billboard like on six oh three was damaged and they use a little stricter thing, six, fifty percent or more, and it has to come down, you can replace it, but you can put up, you have to put up a monopole.
I don't think we replacing.
Yeah.
That's what they, no replacement.
That's good.
At this point.
So it would be.
So it just says in the city, so citywide, city limits.
And that'd be on the next plan of zoning meeting, so once it's finished, I mean, I, I think they're, what, the next meeting's, I don't know.
I don't know.
Not the. It's gonna be, what are we, it's gonna be March, I think it is.
It was either March or April, by the time the deadlines, because sticking by our own deadlines for ourselves too, so.
That's just one of the things I had in my bag, cause I had to read, so, um.
Well, like I said, I.
Kind of striking it out and coming in with a very quick statement.
Paperwork is done, so nobody sneaks one in. Yep, so I'm gonna make a motion that until these come done, that though, uh, that no more billboards can be approved until, uh, the new billboard ordinances has been voted on by the council.
Okay, motion by Mr. Noblock to put a moratorium on billboards within the city limits?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, all right.
That's my intention.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Lewis, discussion, um, I think council had concerns of moratorium and legal trouble possibly.
Point out that I, I have legal concerns over the validity of, validity of that, but.
Okay, okay, noted going into the vote, um, any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Nay, passes six one.
Hi, so I'd ask also if Jamie would, there was some concern about our zoning ordinances, that there's some conflicts about parking lots, about how they're required to be made, I ask if you could go through that zoning ordinance and find those conflicts so we can straighten it up?
I think we have the, the language on that changed and all where, and not by right, it has to be approved, you know, special exception.
Yeah, we just need to get that.
Yeah.
As well as on P N Z to get that clarified.
Okay, anything else, Mr. Noblock?
Yes, I have one other thing, I had a conversation with, uh, Mr. John Chilamovis about an hour ago. And, and we talked about the billboards. What, he kinda re- reiterated what I've been talking about. So, what, what he is looking at is that, like a business will have multiple signs out there, you know, multiple, um, structures and stuff like that, we really need to clean up our, our sign ordinance and make it to where if, if, if there's a sign pole that's not in compliance, say like it's under power lines, like on his particular property on Arnold and, 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 um, Arnold and, uh, highway, I mean, on the highway ninety, it's right under the power line, you can't have that. And, uh, and mainly it's there because originally when that's pole was put in, you had single lane highway. And so the setback changed, so I know that, uh, in Diamond Head, that when you have a new sign, don't you have to bring them into compliance at a city code, Mike?
If you take a sign down, if, uh, Hancock Whitney Bank, when they changed their name, they wanted to take the, the pole sign down.
And so I guess what the point is, is that when a property changes ownership, you need to force the new owners, we need to put this in the ordinance, that they have to bring their sign into compliance, because there's a lot of signage out there that is, in my opinion, it's, it's eyesore, it's dangerous. And, you know, they have one of those things next to the subway, and they have an old sign skeleton there, you know, the bases are, you know, they, they're probably questionable. You have one on highway six oh three, it won't, if it falls.
That particular one has been reported and they've been trying to get that one removed.
The one in the field?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, well.
Right next to subway.
On.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that one too, but.
The one you're talking about next to subway as well.
Yeah, well, see, that used to be the price point sign for the gas station, you know, that used to be there years ago. And, uh, but anyway, I think, I mean, I remember early on back in the nineties when Bill Kerrigee was working and, uh, man, he would make me, he would say, hey, listen, you gotta bring these signs into compliance, if they changed ownership, you can't use that pole no more. And, uh, so, I mean, it, but I never found it and Chilla- Mr. Chilla Milgris never found that in the ordinance also. And, uh, but he was just pointing, he was, you know, politely pointing out that, hey, listen, you got a lot of controversy in your sign ordinance, because you have, uh, uh, well, let's, let's take the little tamale store over there, he's got his sign on the edge of the property, and then you got the, the CBD place with the green cross on it. Uh, the old Dick Reddick building, they have a pole sign, but yet they have a sign that's sitting outside of the pole, they supposed to use the single pole sign. But that was one that, uh, Bill Kerrigee wouldn't let me put a sign on years ago, because it was not in compliance and the setbacks weren't correct. And then he says, man, it needs to be cut down and moved, but, you know, so I just kinda walked away from it, but. I'm just saying that you have a lot of, uh, non-compliance signage out there, um, you know, it's just, it needs to be, it needs to be cleaned up, it needs to be addressed and enforced.
We need to look at the sign ordinance.
I have another question, Mr. President.
Okay, yes, sir.
Uh, the moratorium that we have on, uh, filling in the ditches for culverts, um, purpose of putting that moratorium in was, uh, to stop people from just filling in the ditches, right? Until, was it until our, uh, maybe Ronnie come up with some set of specs to tell us what he wanted? Uh, where he wanted catch basins, what size, the culverts need to be to size them, so we have a proper flow in that basin? Uh, was that the purpose of the council, putting that in?
I think you had to have engineering approved plan as well.
Well, I, I think we got an engineer in, in, uh, over Public Works and maybe he can write some, some, uh, set of.
Usually when they do put them in, if they are, they, they're, they're allowing them to install, you know, if they have the engineering approved, you know, stamp or design, whatever, you know, like for their driveways and whatever, you know, if they would need an extra. So, you know, it, it's not completely down to where everybody just comes fills in their ditches, but being here and studying all, it helps a lot.
Uh, I mean, we, we have an engineer, uh, Ronnie is an engineer, uh, and I think.
Ron is not, Ron is not a certified engineer.
He's not a certified.
He's been an inspector.
Yeah, he worked for an engineering firm, but he's not an engineer.
Probably smarter than some.
Well, is that part of Jason's retainer?
Yeah, uh, couldn't, yeah, isn't that part of Jason's retainer? Where he could, uh, him and Ronnie could get together, I mean, it would save the citizens money that they wouldn't have to spend money on an engineer, that we could write our own specs on what we want in those ditches beside culverts, we want, how many feet, we want those car, those, uh.
Most of the time when they give culvert, especially, Ronnie's pretty, he's pretty tough on culvert, he don't like, he doesn't like those.
I know, that, that's.
You know, um, cause I think it does, I think it doesn't, you know, allow water to flow the way open ditches does, you know, in the amount, I think you have a lot of problems with them. His thing is to, you know, put what is the necessities that's needed on lots and all, but try to leave as much open as we can. You know, cause we've tried to, you know, to get some closed and, and this is a city trying to get them closed and all, and he's dead against it. He won't allow it, you know, and, and he's, he's, he is, but, you know, one of the things is, is he like, he just feels that, the open ditches carries the water a whole, you know, more. But no, we can get them to work on it and, and put it together and all and, and see what we got.
Yeah, I, I would, I would like to see that, uh.
I'll get with him and, and bring something back.
Maybe him and Jason get together and write something up, cause I, I've talked with him, you know, over the, over the year, that, uh, you know, how far you want, uh, catch basins to be, size of them, make them look professional. And, uh, because some citizens, you know, want, wants some front yard. Okay, and, uh, the only way they're gonna get it, uh, they gotta go through that extra cost of getting an engineer. When we have one with a retainer that can get with our Public Works Director and they can design it and say, well, this, if you're gonna do it, this is what we want.
I think one of the main things with all of, you know, e- even around town, we have drainage in the street, but no endless. You know, I mean, and it's a lot more like that than what you think. And one of the things people, you know, it has slowed down people going in, just filling their ditches in on their own and not even knowing about it, you know, because now when you see people, it's easy to figure out, hey, do they have a permit, not have a permit? You know, and, and that, and, and it slowed them down, Ronnie has made them take them out and, and not allow, you know. I'll, we'll get him on this and get Jason's input and see, you know, and all, and move forward on that.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Reed, anything else with Noblock?
Uh, no, I, I gotta say one thing, the, the parade went out really nice and, uh, as far as I can see, there was no events.
Cleaned up quickly?
That, you know, police seemed, I mean, everything seemed pretty calm.
Uh, Mr. Lewis, you stepped out from what you have, anything? Okay, good, okay, um, nothing I hear, parade went good, Public Works did great, cleaned up, police firebought, had a good event. Speaking of ditches, we got to figure something out with six oh three, them ditches are getting terrible and they big and deep and on the highway. But they've tilted it twenty-five now.
I think this is the first time, you know, I don't know if everybody's where, Cody and Man, whether, you know, got an appointment or is now working for him, Doc, he will be over our area, I think we have a very. You know, we, we have a, I think this is the first time, you know, I don't know if everybody's where, Cody and Man, whether, you know, got an appointment, or is now working for M.D.O., he will be over our area. I think we have a very good connection.
All right.
You know, with a, someone local finally, that we can go to instead of somebody from wherever.
Maybe they'll give us some help.
So hopefully we can get him on board. Those ditches are, are in very bad shape, you know, we've always been told, you know, just like when we tried to scrape the road and all, you know, hey, once it leaves the road, you know, it's not ours. That's not true.
Well, I was gonna ask that next. If the puddle is on the other side of the yellow line, it causes a wreck, is it them dots' fault then?
Yeah.
Because the water.
Cause that's where it is.
On six oh three.
Yeah, you know, we went through a couple of years ago and scraped it and all and everything with the help of the county. So, you know, the drainage on that, you know, we're still working on the, um, turning lanes and, and I, and again, I don't believe that should be a city. I think that should be them, especially up toward the interstate while they in that area working for the next couple of years, you know, this is an opportunity for them to come in and, and help us on that area now, but we, you know.
I'll reach out to Cody then and see if he can give.
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna bring him in, just get with him and see what, you know, what we need to get done and all.
All right, thank you. Um, that's all I had. All right. Public forum, do we have a sound up sheet? Oh, do you have something, Mr. Black? I fig- I figured that, let's go.
Well, actually, y'all took care of it, but my question number two, and that was on the billboards, so I appreciate that. I'm glad you put a moratorium on. Um, over a year ago, this council voted down an eight foot fence.
Yes, sir.
My house is still getting egged, and last week, I got lemons thrown at it, and one hit my window. I don't know how I didn't break the window, cause split the lemon open, there was two more lemons in my yard, there's sticks of butter being thrown in my yard, and I have a case number from the police department from over a year and a half, maybe two years ago. Unless I see them, I can't really do anything. And I said, well, if I put up camera, I'm not gonna sit in my backyard twenty-four seven, right? So I put cameras up, well, that's when they put eight wood, eight, eight fence up, which now I can't see the person who's egging my house, throwing lemons, apples, bananas, sticks of butter, shotgun shells. So I'd like with eight foot fence to come back where I can maybe find out who's doing this, cause I'm getting really pissed off about it.
Well, I think it got voted down, didn't it?
Yes, the fence, eight foot fence is still up.
So it should have been removed after they voted down.
And I've been, I've been to people in the city hall, and they tell me, well, we don't have a code en- enforcement, we can't do nothing about it. Now I understand that our building department, building guy is now our code enforcement, is that true?
Acting for the time being.
Acting, all right, well, then he can go have them take down the eight foot fence and make it sick, correct?
Okay, yeah, but we'll pull the minutes on that, Caitlin, if you would please, and present it to, uh, the administration, cause I'm pretty sure it was voted down.
I know you voted it down, yes. It wasn't by majority though, cause under the circumstances.
Yes, sir.
All right, um, question number, number two with the sign ordinance. Um, did I hear properly, that's just, just for information, that the chamber, we pay the electric bill and utility bill for the chamber at the, at the old city hall?
For the building.
We, the taxpayers, pay the electricity bill and the utility bill for the chamber? We, the taxpayers of Bay St. Louis, we pay the, why aren't they paying it? Why is not the chamber paying for their own elec- you know what? I've got, I've got a nonprofit organization that comes to my house once a month. Can I get my electric bill paid by y'all, my utility bill paid by y'all? Cause it's nonprofit. I ain't never heard such thing. I just heard that tonight, and I just wanna make sure that I heard correctly. That they don't have to pay their electric bill and their utility bill. I mean, I hope it's a win-win situation for the ca- for the city and the, the chamber. And I agree with Rod Ward, that, that Hancock County needs to come in too, cause they represent Hancock County, not just Bay St. Louis, and I don't think Bay St. Louis ought to be flipping the whole tab.
We pay it for the Boys and Girls Club, we pay it for the most.
And you shouldn't be paying for that, that's a county organization, Mr. Mayor.
We pay it for the senior citizens, been like that forever.
No, it ain't.
You was on the council.
Well.
We, we, every building that the city of Bay St. Louis has, we pay it. Now, whether, you know.
Well, there again, the Boys and Girl- Girls Club is a, is a county operation, is it not?
No, I, I don't think it is.
The Boys and Girls Club is a Hancock County authority, it's, it's in Hancock County, it's not Bay St. Louis Boys and Girls Club.
It's not just for Bay St. Louis.
That was the name that was given to it when it was formed, cause I was one of the forming members.
Do they bus kids from like Hancock and stuff to there in the evenings too? I don't know, I'm asking.
They don't even do that for the senior citizens?
Or just Bay Wavely School District kids.
It's not just Bay St. Louis children.
But, so I'm hearing correctly that we, the taxpayers of Bay St. Louis, pay for the Chamber of Commerce's electricity bill and water bill, and when they start opening up the bottom floor, the electricity bill's gonna come up, cause it's gonna be more, more heat, more air conditioning. So I am correct in saying the taxpayers of Bay St. Louis is paying that bill. I did not know that, uh, heard that today. All right, um.
They pay rent.
Huh?
They do pay rent.
Well, I know, Mr. Mayor, I remember when you was a, a, the councilman at large, y'all pretty much threw the chamber out of city hall annex, the old city hall annex, and that was one of your biggest complaints, was giving stuff to them for free, if I'm not mistaken.
You are.
Thought you and Rod Ward and all the gang, pretty much ganged upon, less feeling game about all that. Anyway, um, there is a gas cut in, in the middle of DeMontlez and Street between three twenty-nine and three thirty-one and three thirty. I happen to do two little small yards in that neighborhood. That gas cut has been cut for over eight months. I noticed other cuts, water cuts, that around the corner, they got paved about a month ago. This one hadn't been, this has been like this for eight months. And I don't know why that it, and, and here's the thing, the limestone rocks are ba- I gotta go and pick rocks out of my customers' grass, because they're all in the yard before I can cut.
No, it's DeMontlez, you said?
DeMontlez.
DeMontlez, okay.
What is, what is the schedule on that? I mean, we deal all that ourselves, like the patching of those?
Well, they patched the other cuts, but for, didn't do the one right there.
Yeah, you know, we, we get the guy to come in and do it, we patched some ourselves, if they small.
What's the frequency of, how often are we getting that?
Getting him back over is not on a regular basis, unable to get him on a regular basis, so, you know, some of it, but it, we'll send him by that and look at it and see, and see what it looks like.
Well, one was right, done right around the corner on, on, uh, knee case, half a block away from it, and it got done. There was another one down Main Street that got done, but the one on DeMontlez and Street didn't get done.
Okay.
And so I would appreciate it, where I, I don't even charge the people extra money, for getting the big limestone rocks out of yard. I actually blow them out, and I try to blow them back in the hole, cause there's a big hole right now after all the rain we had too.
Yes.
I noticed the cut that they made up down, right down close to the knee case, they put in the, uh, ground up asphalt.
Yeah.
Which was a lot better.
Okay.
It don't bounce around as much as the big limestone rock. Other than that, gentlemen, have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And, um, we'll have Caitlin pull the minutes for the fence and do the check in two for you, Mr. Black.
Thank you very much.
All right. City clerks report, motion to approve the Bay St. Louis dock of the claims number two four zero zero eight, dated February sixth, twenty twenty-four, in amount of six hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars and eighty-four cents. Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. Any discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes six zero, Mr. Noblock's out the room. Uh, B, motion to approve the Bay St. Louis dock of the claims number two four dash oh one oh special, dated February sixth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of one hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Do I have a motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second? I'll second the motion. Any discussion?
I think Mr. Noblock might have had some discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. We on B, city clerks, the special docket?
B, uh, city clerks report?
Yes, sir. Special docket for a hundred and seventy thousand.
Okay, I'm good.
You go with it? Okay, all right. Okay, any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, motion passes seven zero. Consent agenda, items A through A C minus L, because we did that earlier. Do I have a motion? Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman. Any discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 He said, uh, okay, aye, motion passes seven zero. I didn't hear Gary, I'm sorry. Um, minutes approval, city council, second regular meeting, January sixteenth, twenty twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-four, five thirty P M. Motion, no changes, Mr. Seal? Second, Mr. Hoffman. Any discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye. You, you aye, Gary?
Aye, I'm sorry.
All right.
Dammit, pay attention.
All right, seven zero. Um, Mr. Smith, anything? All right, no, close second. Motion to adjourn. Motion, Mr. Seal, do I have a second? Hoffman, vote to motion?
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.